All right. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to our city council meeting for January 23rd. Prior to the start of our meeting, we've got a proclamation regarding human trafficking, and I'm going to ask Matt Busek and his Rotary Group, or whoever wants to come up, and also ask Shirley Redding to come up. And all of her group. Yeah, I'm going to let you use the mic and kind of tell what this is all about, and then I'll read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. My name's Tamara Kenworthy, and I'm here with Rotarians from our metro area. And one of the projects that we have citywide is a support and focus on human trafficking. And in support of our event that will be coming up later in the spring, we wanted to also have your recognition for the month of January for Human Trafficking Month.
Shirley, anybody want to say anything real quick?
I'm here on behalf of the Plymouth Task Force, as well as the Network Against Human Trafficking here in Iowa. And we appreciate you doing this again for us, Mayor. Human trafficking is a problem that's right before our eyes. But so often, we don't recognize it because we're not educated on the signs and symptoms. So that's why we dedicate this month to having awareness be our focus, so people recognize it and then can report it.
All right. Our proclamation reads as follows. The United States was founded upon the principle that all people are created with the inalienable right to freedom and added the 13th Amendment to the Constitution, making slavery illegal. And whereas human trafficking and slavery in the United States is most often found in the form of forced labor or sex trafficking, which weakens our social fabric and increases violence and organized crime. And whereas the Rotary Club of Des Moines is working towards the abolishment of human trafficking through education, volunteerism, advocacy, and collaboration. And whereas even though awareness is growing, human trafficking continues to go unreported due to its isolating nature, the misunderstanding of its definition and the lace of awareness about its indicators. And whereas increased community education on how to identify victims of human trafficking, along with increased knowledge of local resources and services for those affected by these criminal actions, can help restore freedom and dignity to survivors, as well as help diminish the numbers of future victims. And whereas every business, community organization, faith community, and person can make a difference by choosing products that are not made by forced labor, also by working to protect people from sexual exploitation, and by becoming more aware of the problem and possible solutions. Now therefore, I, the Mayor of the City of Des Moines, on behalf of our city council and the residents of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim the month of January 2023 as Human Trafficking Prevention and Awareness Month, and encourage everyone to become more informed, be vigilant, to report serious and suspicious activity, and to work towards solutions to end all forms of human trafficking. If you see something that does not look right, take action and call law enforcement or the National Human Trafficking Hotline at 1-888-373-7888. Thank you. Appreciate all your work, everybody. Thank you. We'll get a quick photo. I'm going to move this here for a sec. My last, before we get started here this evening, that if everybody can, if we could put all of our phones on silent, that would be really good. Prior to the start of our meeting tonight, I want to make a quick statement. As Mayor and on behalf of our city council, I want to take a moment and address the horrific shooting this afternoon. It starts right here. It's a school program on Southwest 5th Street, and it's run by a friend of the city, Will Keeps, who is recovering tonight in the hospital. We all wish Will our best. Unfortunately, this is another one of those events that seems to take place too often across too many communities in this country. A story that repeats itself, the tragic story of young lives taken far too soon by gun violence. Two teenagers tonight are dead because of this violence. Just a short time ago, I spoke to their family members and offered our community's support and thoughts and prayers. But there is little one can say that will lessen their pain. Nothing that can be said to bring them back, those who were killed so senselessly. Three others are in custody, suspects of these shootings. That brings a total of five families of teenagers affected by youth gun violence in a matter of minutes on a Monday afternoon, right here in our capital city. This is a growing and alarming phenomenon in our country, and one we've seen too often in the past, and again today in the city of Des Moines. And no, Des Moines does not escape this problem. That is why as elected officials, law enforcement, community leaders, and residents, we must do more to battle this issue and never accept or dismiss teenage gun violence as simply a turbulent sign of the times. Too many young lives depend on it. Now, I would ask us all to take a moment of silence in honor and respect for today's victims and families. I see Reverend Woodfield in our audience. I would like him to come up, if he will, and maybe say a few words.
Whatever your faith tradition might be, I ask that you would join me in yet a word of prayer, as we beseech our Creator for times like this, that He would bring us together in unity, one for none. Let's pray. We ask you, Heavenly Father, that you will give your special blessing upon us in the city of Des Moines. Thank you for our officials who call and offer to us this opportunity, that we might unify ourselves across the length and the breadth of our citizenship. In a humane way, God, we fall with brokenheartedness, for it's once again, our streets are riveted with violence. And so we're asking that in the midst of this violence, God, you will give us your peace. We pray for these families tonight, who have been separated by this violence. We pray for the continents of the city, that we somehow will regain a consciousness of love and concern. We pray for hearts tonight, that we might once again feel that we are our brother and sister's keeper. And we pray for the faults, that as we consider life, that we consider the issues that intrigue us, that we'll always remember that life is valuable, and in the midst of that value, we won't victimize. So bless us as we go forth. Strengthen us across the length and breadth of our professionals who serve us. Help these families tonight, as they've been separated and comfort them. May the city stretch out long and strong arms to give the hug that is needed, that we might continue to move forward, yet for better days. We thank you for this opportunity. In the name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. We will call our meeting to order for January 23rd. I will ask the clerk to please call roll.
County?
Here.
Boson?
Here.
Voss?
Here.
Shoemaker?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Item one is amending the procedural rules of the Des Moines City Council. You get a...
Move approval.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Ask everybody to vote, please.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment? I just wanted to let folks know, I don't plan on voting for these rule changes. You know, one of the things that I've previously said is I think as a council, we should listen more. That includes to the public, and it includes each other. And this is taking away a venue to create a work session to discuss issues, which I think is an important part of the deliberative process. So I do not plan on supporting this change, and I hope we can revisit our rules more comprehensively at some point in the future, so that we provide more opportunities to listen to each other and to the public.
I'd like to make a comment as well. I think, first of all, on a wording basis, it's a little bit redundant to say, to even include the second offer of bringing something to the council, because there isn't like a stop point where you're no longer allowed to bring an item, so it really doesn't make sense to have to say that you're going to do it twice, because you've already cut off our ability to bring an item to the agenda. That we're cutting off democratic processes. This has been, through the history of this council, that I've been paying attention. We're just cutting off democratic processes left and right. We are requiring that we already agree on a topic, to even bring it to an agenda, which is undercutting the public meeting process, assuming that people are having these discussions behind the scenes, instead of in the public forum like they're supposed to. So I will also be voting no on this. And I don't appreciate that we weren't even asked for discussion. It was just moved as quickly as possible. I think that was extremely intentional.
Five yes, two no.
Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move approval.
Second.
Before we vote, I want everybody to know that consent agenda items three through 25, four AA, was withdrawn. The inspections are incomplete. Item 16 is revised. Council communication number 23-046. Ask everybody to vote.
Seven yes.
Item three is approving the consent agenda tonight. Those are items three through 25. Quickly, item 4L, 4M, 4N, Councilmember Westergaard votes no. Item seven, Councilmembers Westergaard and Gatto vote no. Item 16, Councilmember Mandelbaum wishes to speak. Item 16, Councilmember Gatto votes no. Item 16A, Councilmember Gatto votes no. With that...
Move approval.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Ask everybody to vote on this one.
Seven yes.
All right. That takes us straight to the hearings. Our first hearing item is item 26. Quickly, before our hearing items, we have one conveyance hearing, three lease amendment hearings, one comprehensive plan hearing, and one request to dismiss a hearing on which no public comment will be taken. For all the hearings this evening, any interested person may make germane comments, not to exceed the one minute per person, to a maximum of five minutes per hearing, unless the hearing is ended sooner for failure to make germane comments or public comment ends. Item 26 is on the vacation of Allen Park as parkland due to the Des Moines River Levy Alterations Project Phase C, located along the Des Moines River at 800 Southeast 6th Street. A is the first consideration in the ordinance above. B is the final consideration in the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by Ben Page, our Parks and Recreation Director, and requires six votes. C is on the naming of dedicated parkland located in the vicinity of Southeast 5th Street and East Titus Avenue as Allen Park.
Mr. Mayor, just a real quick comment. First off, I think Parks Department and others in legal and real estate able to get this piece of property on Southeast 5th and Titus. And I know I've had discussions with the manager. The next phase of this is actually creating a park. So we have 10 minutes of walking, because this is a park desert in this whole neighborhood. And so I'm happy that we're getting the community park finished, but I will be looking at my colleagues for support, not in this budget cycle, but in the next budget cycle, for opportunities to grow this park and be able to maybe get some private donations to help with that. But with that being said, I will move 26A, B, and C.
I'll second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Let's open it up and ask if there's any comments from the general public on this item regarding Allen Park. Okay, seeing none, we have a motion. I'll ask everybody to vote.
Seven yes.
Item 27. Item 27 is dismissing a hearing on an in-building lease in agreement with US COC of Greater Iowa LLC, US seller for wireless communication equipment within the Municipal Service Center Phase Two. Again, this is to dismiss this one.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Item is dismissed. Item 28 is on the Second Amendment to lease the AH Blank Park Zoo to the Blank Park Zoo Foundation, Inc., Council Communication Number 23-040. Let's open it up for germane comments from the general public regarding the zoo.
I see none, Your Honor. I'll move item 28.
Second.
28's been moved and seconded. Ask everybody to vote.
Seven yes.
Item 29 is on the Fifth Amendment to lease the Des Moines Botanical Center to the Greater Des Moines Botanical Garden Corporation, Council Communication Number 23-039. A is the First Amendment to amended and restated urban renewal development agreement with the Greater Des Moines Botanical Garden. Let's quickly open it up for any germane comments from the general public regarding the lease with the botanical center to the Greater Des Moines Botanical Garden. 29, 29A is moved and seconded.
Seven yes.
Item 30 is on the Sixth Amendment to the Real Estate Lease and Asset Transfer Agreement with the Des Moines Airport Authority to exclude excess property adjoining Flewer Drive between Highview Drive and McKinley Avenue, a dedicating additional Flewer Drive right away as part of the airport Kohl's Drive Reconstruction Phase Two project. Again, let's open it up and see if anybody from the general public would like to make comment regarding that lease transfer regarding the Des Moines Airport.
Hello, my name is Adam Callanan, Ward Three. Yeah, with this, I see that we're changing some of the roads around the airport for its expansion. I know currently, there's no bus route to and from the airport, at least for the purpose of the airport. So at times on the weekend, for instance, the traffic there, if you don't have a car, is difficult. I hope that while we're talking about changing the actual roads around it, we can also talk about, or at least the city can look into, assisting DART in setting up a bus route to and from the airport.
Seeing no additional comment, I'll move item 30 and 38.
Second.
30 and 38 have been moved?
Seven yes.
Item 31 is on a request from the Greater Des Moines Partnership and City of Des Moines for review and recommendation to adopt the Downtown DSM Future Forward Plan as an element of the Plan DSM, creating our Tomorrow Comprehensive Plan. Mr. Manager, did you have any comment on this?
Yes, Mayor, we did have a request to continue this, and I believe there was some discussion about even addressing it at a work session, if possible, which we could add on Wednesday morning, if we so desire.
I would agree with that.
Yep.
I don't think there's that much on the agenda, so I think we could add it, and that way we can see all the connections that they're talking about.
Terrific.
Somebody make a motion to continue them...
I'll move to continue. Absolutely.
All right. Second.
All right, for everybody...
Seven yes.
Just move and continue this, and we're going to have an open discussion regarding this Plan DSM, creating our Tomorrow Comprehensive Plan...
For the next council.
For the next council meeting, but we're going to have a work session to go over the detail of it.
Wednesday.
Wednesday. All right. It is 5:18. Our hearings have ended. Let's go back to item 16. Councilmember Mandelbaum wishes to speak on that one, so let's get back to that one. Item 16 is approving the final terms of an urban renewal development agreement with the union at River Edge LP, the annex group for the new construction of a 216-unit multifamily apartment project located at 1600 Indianola Avenue, Council Communication Number 23-046. apartment project located at 1600 Indianola Avenue, Council Communication Number 23 dash zero four six. A is in agreement with union at River Edge LP to provide a grant of $300,000 in conjunction with the Urban Renewal Development Agreement, and that is Council Communication Number 23 dash zero four five. And Councilmember Mantlebaum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a good project, and I just wanted to speak on a few things that have happened since the preliminary terms were in front of us. I know there had been some neighborhood concern, and one of the things that had happened is the developer had a neighborhood meeting as well as outreach to the school district to get input and to share the plan so that that could be taken into account as part of this plan. There's also been work done with a traffic study, and a couple of pieces from that study are identified in the development agreement at this point, including a pedestrian signal and some connectivity to the existing trail system. I do want to acknowledge that there is concern from the neighborhood about the secondary streets that will be utilized as part of this project. Now, that's separate from the development agreement, but those concerns are well taken, and we should be mindful particularly as we address development in this area going forward of the need for investment in the infrastructure in the area and need to make sure that we're providing the appropriate level of connectivity. You know, some of those streets don't have sidewalks on them, and it's one of those things as we have a complete streets policy and as we work towards providing that connectivity that we should be mindful of going forward, and wanted to make sure that those issues that the neighborhood has highlighted are top of mind for staff to be addressing. And I know Councilmember Boss helped flag these, and they are in front of staff at this point. And then finally, I wanted to also talk about the addition, because I think this is the first development agreement that will have done this, is we have verifiable payroll language that has been included in this agreement. It's been something that we've talked about, but it's one of those things we want to make sure that the folks who are working on these projects, particularly projects with incentives, are paid. The payroll taxes for these folks, the unemployment insurance, all of those pieces of, you know, a fair wage and a fair shake are addressed with the dollars that we're putting in. This is a small step towards helping realize that, but I'm glad we're taking that in this development agreement, and I hope that we build upon this in the future. So on top of all that, you know, I still believe this is a good project for not just this neighborhood and this corridor, but for our community, and I am happy to move item 16 and 16A.
I'll second.
Mr. Mayor, I think someone from the public wanted to speak. Are they allowed to speak? Well, I'll go ahead and make a statement. First off, I appreciate that this is going to have the verifiable payroll in it. I think that's a real positive for any project that we do, that we're doing economic incentives or development, and I think that's great. I haven't voted for this project from the very beginning. Nothing has changed my mind about it. I don't believe that the neighbors are ecstatic about it or even feel like they've really been included. I think we all got an email today from one of the neighborhood presidents that said that if this is how the process is going to go, where after it gets put on the agenda, then we reach out and we talk to them because they've called us, that's a flaw in our process. And so this isn't the right spot for this. There's plenty of opportunity. This is a riverfront property, and so I won't be supporting that for those reasons. I didn't support it when it came in front of us, and I'm not going to change my mind now, so.
Six yes, one no.
Okay, it takes us to ordinance's second consideration. This item 32, this is to rezone 810 East Euclid Avenue from N5 Residential District to limited MX3 Mixed Use District to allow the expansion of the parking lot to the East Get 'N Go. A is the final consideration of the ordinance above. Waiver is requested by Dennis Flora, the President of Get 'N Go, and requires six votes. Council, discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I thought that if we're at a council meeting, I would really like the property owner to meet with the neighbor above, and I have received a few neighbors. I have not received. There it is. I have not received any communication with Get 'N Go about this. I did speak to Mr. Ludwig earlier today. Mike said that he was going to, that the suggestion was that we continue it, but did you ever get anything in writing? Can we continue? Can I just request that we continue it?
Council can ask to continue the item. The applicant told me on the phone they were willing to continue. I still have not received an email, but.
Okay.
Well, this is the second reading. We need three, right? So we could pass this one but not do the final as requested on 32A.
I would rather continue it because I don't want to vote for it. If this property owner is not going to respond to the neighborhood, then I think I'm going to have to vote no on it, and I don't think anybody wants that. We're just saying, would you please just meet with the neighbors and address their concerns? And now, Mike tells me that Mr. Flora said he sent me an email, but I don't have an email. I don't.
I've not received the email that they said they sent either, so verbally they requested a continuance to February 6th. I would just point out that if council wants to waive the third reading on February 6th, that's an option as well. So at this point, they requested verbally a continuance to February 6th, so that's what staff would recommend.
I would move to continue item 32 until the next meeting.
Second.
Seven yes.
Right, item 33, Chapter 114 in the Municipal Code Regarding Traffic Regulation Changes As Follows, Council Communication Number 23 dash zero three seven. A is a prohibition of turns on red on Grand Avenue at Ninth Street, westbound, left turn. B is a code modification on Fifth Avenue from Watson Powell Jr. Way to School Street. Council, any thoughts?
Move item 33, 33A, 33B, and pursuant to rule 42A. Move to waive the second and third reading.
I'll second.
Seven yes.
Item 34, dismissing Chapter Two of the Municipal Code relating to procurement by increasing the dollar value of contracts for goods and services that are administratively approved, revising the bid and request for proposal processes to utilize online bidding and proposal platforms, and to delete requirement for public openings of sealed bids and proposals in response to requests for the proposal. Council Communication Number 23 dash zero four seven. A is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by Nick Shaw, our Finance Director, and requires six votes.
Move item 34, 34A.
I'll second.
Seven yes.
All right, item 35 is our request from our citizens to speak this evening, and, you know, for those persons wishing to speak this evening under the public speaking item, we will only be calling on those who have registered to speak. All speakers must comply with the rules regarding their names and addresses, or they will be not be recognized to speak. Each of the five speakers this evening will receive up to two minutes each to make their comments. Please keep your own time because at the end of those two minutes, the clerk's going to say time and turn off the mic, and then we're going to move on immediately to the next speaker. We want to hear from our residents, and we encourage residents to be respectful to others' viewpoints that may be different from their own. Let's start right in. Our first speaker this evening is Adam Callanan.
Hello, my name is Adam Callanan. I use he/him pronouns, and I live in Ward Three. I'm going to talk about the problems that City Council has with open meetings and interacting with the public. Something that just came up today was that a lot of the meetings are announced late. The quarterly work, next quarterly work session was announced today, less than two days in advance. That's not enough time, especially considering the city asks that accommodation requests come in three days before meetings happen. There are also changes to rules that are made against the public. This has been happening historically. We had an example today where there was an attempt at no discussion, and part of these rules are also to require a majority before items come on the agenda, which is odd because that requires some sort of private meetings to establish a majority before actually getting the majority, as far as I can tell. I'm not really sure how else that works. It's not clear or transparent how that majority is established without having an open meeting. And there's also a lack of online participation still. Other cities and counties have worked it out. The cities have refused to put any resources into making that happen because they don't want online participation. And couple that with the low capacity they have in this room. Meetings like today, it's not full, but there are meetings where there's a huge overflow, and people are just told that. We just still have a low capacity in this room for some reason. Also refusing to take public comments on ordinary agenda items and controversial ones. We saw that earlier today. Somebody wanted to speak on an agenda item, and y'all didn't even consider a vote on it. You just kind of all looked at each other weirdly about it. You don't even have the dignity to like acknowledge that somebody wants to speak and say no to them. Also, this morning, there was a request to meet with landlords. I think it's interesting, there was not a request similarly to meet with renters in that scenario, just showing that landlords, to some people, are given weight above the public of renters. Council also routinely brings SWAT teams to meetings and other police, has arrested people at meetings. Councilors have also yelled at and made accusations of members of the public. And also just want to point out that y'all also can get real heated about single no votes. Disagreement is fine, but y'all need to manage it.
Our next speaker is Anna Noel.
I'm Anna Noel, 4402 Ovid Avenue in Port Polk County. On December 30, a high-speed police chase ended up with a pit maneuver on a side street in Beverdale, causing over $45,000 damage to a car in my home. As I understood from the news and police accounts, the chase got to 80 miles an hour through city streets. The pit maneuver threw a 6,000-pound truck into my house, with both vehicles ending up against my home. After this happened, the truck tried to reverse out of my yard, and the police car hit him again and rammed it further into my home. This event started with a license plate violation. The damages include a lot of damage to my house and $25,000 to a car. Even so, I'm very grateful that this did not end up with a loss of life, as people walk in this area, and my good friend walks his dog all the time. I'm aware of another incident just a few days before in the Highland Park area. Charlene, a widow who has just bought her home two months prior, was not as lucky as me. The truck ended up in her living room, only feet away from where she was sleeping. Charlene spent a month in a hotel while her home was made safe for her. She feels lucky that she wasn't on her couch at the time of the accident. It ended up in her kitchen wall. She can't understand why a missing license plate tag ended up with this type of damage. What made it worthwhile to turn her life upside down? I'm here today because I don't believe that either of these incidents needed to happen. A sergeant with the police station told me that it's a matter of risk and reward. I am here because I question that risk and reward, and I've got a lot more to say about this if I could continue.
Yep, we're going to receive them. Or you could come back again and do it again if you want, but if you've got some comments, we can receive them and file them and.
I do have comments. Who do I give it to?
We'll give it to the clerk, and then she can circulate them.
Thank you.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor? They are received. Our next speaker is Lori Ann Young.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, City Manager. My name is Lori Young, and I live in Ward One. I'm the Communications Director of Just Voices Iowa, a local nonprofit dedicated to ending racially biased policing through education, collaboration, and advocacy. For years, we have been part of the community to insist upon complete police data collection, a ban on pretextual stops, and a community review board, plus others. We've seen some progress, although it's been hard fought and not without resistance. Why do we want change? Ultimately, we too want improved public safety. Well, that hinges on transparency, community input, and accountability. Just Voices has recently become aware of two more lawsuit settlements against the city and the DMPPD, one for $45,000 and one for $875,000. I repeat, $875,000, skyrocketing the total amount of lawsuit settlements over the past three to five years to well over $2 million. If you care about transparency and accountability, the public deserves to know answers to the following questions. What is the source of money used to pay and settle these lawsuits? What was the cost of defending these lawsuits? What reserves were set aside to cover potential liability in these lawsuits? Are the officers engaged in the conduct that led to these lawsuits held accountable for their actions and in what manner? And don't forget, there are eight pending lawsuits still to be adjudicated involving 23 litigants against the city and the DMPPD for unconstitutional policing during the summer of 2020 protests. How much more taxpayer money has to be spent without police accountability, oversight, and reform? Our residents deserve to know.
Next speaker is Harvey Harrison.
Good evening. My name is Harvey Harrison. I live at 680 Harwood Drive in Des Moines. I'm speaking to you this afternoon on behalf of Just Voices also regarding the proposed 2024 fiscal year budget. You've each received a packet of materials that relate to that budget for the Des Moines Police Department. The packet includes the initial report from Civiletics Consultant, who is our consultant. Civiletics is uniquely situated to assist in the work. I encourage you to read the analysis and then arrange a time to individually sit down with us to discuss the research, the implications of that research, and the recommendations for areas of reduction and real allocation of resources that flow from this. We know that Des Moines is spending over $76 million on policing and employs the equivalent of 474 full-time employees, more than any other city department. The average cost of all those employees is $140,000 per year, and that includes both sworn and civilian personnel. That means the increase will be in the sworn personnel. The per capita spending on police has increased enormously during the misguided war on drugs, while per capita expenditures on other needed. while per capita expenditures on other needed and important community services, such as housing, community development, public health, public libraries, and similar programs, has remained static. There's a chart showing that that's included in the packet. All of this must change. I'm taking this public opportunity to renew my request to the city manager for a meeting to discuss the recommendations that Just Voices is making with regard to police funding and to receive the answers to the questions that are posed in our submissions to the city manager and this council. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jolene Prescott.
My name is Jolene Prescott. I live at 3013 Third Street, and I'm having a real big case of deja vu today because I remember back in March coming up here to a meeting, and we had had a shooting over at East High, and a person was dead, a young person, and now we have, today, we have two young people dead. I really think, I know at that time, I went and talked to the school board because you've got to catch kids young. You got to start this when they're little. By the time they're old enough to drive cars and run around, it's too late, and I think what we really need is a good working relationship between this body and the school district so we can get to kids before it's a problem. I think I'm just going to have to talk to my school board representative again, but I want us to work on this. Thank you.
Motion to receive. 35A, 3B.
I'll second.
Seven yes.
All right, that completes our agenda. Could we get a motion?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This meeting is adjourned. Want to thank everybody for attending.